Right.
It's not just for us, but it's for the
It's for the recording.
Yeah.
It's not for the audience.
Correct.
Good evening. The zoning Board of Appeals for the town of Mansfield nearby is open. And I'd like to call the role of the members who are present.
Yeah. Tina Huey.
Okay.
Robert Searns.
Michelle Whissing.
Donald Vino, who are sitting here. And do we have any other members online?
I don't see anybody in Zoom.
Yeah. Well, I hereby declare that we have a quorum present.
It would be up here.
But since we don't have any official business, we're pretty well set to go ahead. And we have, first of all, the approval of the October 24th, 23 minutes, which is the last hearing that we had. And that was the application of Don Curtis, owner applicant, for a variance to reduce the required rear yard setback in the RAR 90 zone from forty three point three feet to thirty one feet for a sixteen foot by twenty four foot deck on property located at ten Fern Road. And
Mr. Chair, may I interrupt just for one second? Hollis Cotton has joined us.
Oh, Hollis has joined us. Welcome, Hollis.
Hello, I apologize for the tiredness, had difficulty with the Zoom. Thank you.
That's all right. I have difficulty with Zoom constantly. So we have the communication for the approval of the minutes of that meeting, which we received in our last packet. And do I have a motion for approval?
Well, sure, yeah, I guess I'll move to approve the minutes from the October 24th, 23 meeting.
And
Curtis, I'm in a meeting, I'll call you back.
Are you done?
Yeah. And we have just received an additional alternate member. Is that correct? Yes. Who shall be seated in lieu of any other faces that we happen to not have around here for the meeting.
So, sorry.
That's all right.
I may interrupt. So
I got the laws.
You have four regular meeting, four regular members present.
Yes.
And you have two alternates present.
Okay.
So what we typically would do, and we're going to look at your bylaws as a part of this meeting, but how we typically handle this is to seat one of the members alphabetically. One of the alternate members would be seated for your fifth member.
For the fifth member. Okay. So
Oh, it seems like Ms. Huey would H become H I J. So Ms. Huey seems like she won the lottery for this evening.
Thank you.
I think that we can proceed with the approval of those minutes. And if there are any additions or corrections, do I hear any? If not, all of those in favor who were in attendance, would you please vote? Do we have, we have a vote for approval?
Yeah.
Yes, and we have a second. Did I hear that, Hollis?
Yeah.
Thank you. And since the three of us were the individuals that were present at that time, I believe we need to take a vote for approval or correction. And the vote is to approve. Do I have any corrections, additions, deletions? Hearing none, all of those of us who are here would signify by saying aye or nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The nays do not have it. Okay. So we're, we're eventually passed, effectively passed for the, for the minutes. And the next order of business is our new business, which we have a guest at our meeting, the town attorney, Kevin Demers. Deneen, I'm sorry. And if you'd like to take and introduce yourself and give us a kind of a overall of what we will be listening to.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I said, my name is Kevin Deneen, I've been the town attorney for quite a while, a little bit here up in Mansfield. In addition to that, I've been doing municipal town attorney work for closing in on thirty five, forty years. So probably the, one of the largest areas that we end up with in court is land use matters, including everything from the wetlands, the planning and zoning, to the ZBA and Board of Appeals matters that you guys are in charge of. And talking to staff and they thought it might be helpful just to kind of go over a little bit of the process and the pitfalls, if you will, in hearing matters that come before you as a zoning board. And I think the materials that Jennifer and everyone have passed out to you covers the sort of the areas on that. I wanted to focus a little bit in on the issuance of variances and the applications that variances comes before you. That's probably the area, in my experience, I think in most attorneys that do this type of work, it's the area in which the most, the largest percentage of cases get overturned on appeal if there's an appeal on that. And I think there's just, it's not reflective of anything. They tend to be individual variances that are coming up. They tend to be folks that are your neighbors, your friends, acquaintances, people that are on there. And I think the local views of what constitutes a hardship or what's legally permissible is very different from what the courts apply. And so if there's appeals, they tend to take a pretty harsh look at those, those types of variances. And I know, I'm sure some of you are going to be going through the Land Use Academy and some of the other training pieces. But really trying to focus in on, on the hearing process and the, and what constitutes a hardship. The other thing that comes in often to play both in ZBAs of Board of Appeals, planning and zoning and wetlands, is ex parte communications. You're supposed to really make your decision on the information that's presented to you at the public hearing. And again, a little less so on ZBAs, but with planning, zoning and wetlands, they tend to be sort of very often high profile matters. You'll be at the grocery store, you'll be at the pharmacist, you'll be out and about and someone will want to start talking to you about it. And you really need to be careful to not take that information because it's just really a matter of fundamental fairness. Everybody ought to hear the same things and everybody has a response, an opportunity to respond to it. And even though it may be done for the best of reasons, it's the kind of thing that a court will look fairly askance at on those things. But the most, the area that the courts most often focus on is whether or not someone who's applied for a variance that has really proven that there is what's called a legal hardship or a hardship under the statute. And the statute in all the court cases are very firm on this is that the hardship that the person identifies really has to be tied to the land. The topography of the land, the layout of the lot, something that's unique to that parcel. You see it a lot on the shoreline where you have these undersized lots that was Grandma's cottage. And now they want to build your year round house on that. Well, you're in this small beach community and every lot is four thousand square feet. There's nothing unique about that lot. And that's a case that very often gets reversed because the neighbors don't want to see the McMansion go up on the four thousand square foot lot so there's someone keeping an eye on it. But it really has to be tied to the land. And the courts and some of the regular cases out there really emphasize that and really emphasize that it's not a question of whether or not someone can do what, with their land, what he or she wants to do. It has to be really tied back into, excuse me for that phone, to the land itself. Because the power of the zoning board of appeals is really to exempt or change the zoning for that parcel. And it doesn't matter if it's, you know, old Mr. Smith who's been there for a hundred years. Because once you make that decision, that variance stays with the land as long, you know, forever, until it gets surrendered or otherwise modified. So the courts have really emphasized that it's not about the individual who's owns the property at this point, whether he or she wants to do something with it. It really has to be tied back to the land itself and the configuration of land, the wetlands that are on it, the smoke that's on it, something that's very peculiar to that piece of land. You know, the courts are constantly repeating when they do reverse something that variances are supposed to be rare and very fact based and things like that and evidence. Sort of keeping on the same theme as those sort of beachfront communities down there, the, near the beach. You see this in Connecticut, it has to be unique to that parcel. If everybody's got a small lot or everybody's on a, not a small, but whatever it is, it has to be something unique to that lot. And it's not because someone wants to maximize their financial situation. It's, you know, there's a famous case that came down, a very big case that came down. It's not, there was a small house, they wanted to make it bigger, it was going to be much improved, but the courts turned around and said, it's not a question of improving the property or anything else. Hadn't you really shown that there's something unique about that? It can't be self created. Someone can't, you know, plow out an area or bring in wetlands and then say, well, now it's, now it's a problem that's on that. Probably the, one of the other areas we see this a real lot happening is someone has a non-conforming look use or a structure on the property and they come in to seek a variance. And sometimes you want to do that because it will actually help with the non-conformity, but it cannot expand the non-conformity. There's a new series of cases that I started out, you can if it's actually narrowing it or making it a more palatable type of non-conformity, but those are rare and far, you know, few and far between. So it's really a question of sort of keeping a focus on what the hardship is to this particular parcel. And, you know, these are, these can be, present very difficult choices for you because they, as I said, they can, a lot of times it can be, you know, a neighbor or someone that you really want to help out. And it's important to recognize, especially when you do this, is you are setting a precedent on that because you carve something outside of what is supposed to be the generalized zone for this. And the way the courts look at it, there really needs to be a very specific reason tied to that land itself to allow that to be varied. The whole idea of zoning is to make it uniform over those zones and to break the town into those different districts and things like that. So that's really the, the sort of two things I wanted to hit on is, is the, the ex parte communication and, and the hardship itself. I think one of the reasons that you see a lot of this is, it get reversed is, you know, the ones that get appealed, they usually some kind of opposition to the, do it to begin with. So like I used to say to my kids when they were growing up, nothing's a problem until it's a problem. And then when it reaches my level, then it becomes a big problem. So what happens is you don't see a lot of appeals if everybody's okay with it. But again, you're setting that precedent that's going to go across the board. So you really have to be, the next one may not be quite the same feeling that everybody has on that. So I would encourage you to, to work with staff, you got a very good staff there. They help me when there's questions that they have that. And I just wanted to sort of take that opportunity to say hello and kind of go over what, how things work from my perspective, which is very different from being in the chairs that you guys get to sit at.
Thank you. Questions?
I did want to say that, you know, staff works a lot with Attorney Deneen. And so if there's ever questions, we're here to guide you. If you're, if there's questions that you have, we can always reach out to Attorney Deneen. You can come to us and we're, you know, we're trying to, we keep up with case law and all of that. So you, you're in good hands with Kevin and with, with staff, but we rely on Kevin a lot.
Thank you.
Well, good luck and congratulations to those new and rejoining the board.
Thanks so much. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don, is your mic on?
Not yet. There. Next order of business, with thanks to Kevin Deneen, is the orientation materials and the Land, Land Use Academy fact sheets. Would staff like to
Sure, I was wondering, I think we did, we were so excited to approve the minutes that I think we skipped over the introduction of new members. And I was wondering if perhaps the new folks, and just go around the room so that folks knew, know who everyone is.
I would appreciate maybe even a little bit of a tagline on as to how, how the new members got here. Well, who'd like to start?
I'll volunteer.
Right up to the mic.
Right up to the mic. Okay. Michelle Whissing. I am a new resident, resident basically in the, in the town. And I had come to the first master planning meetings and actually went to you and said, how can I volunteer? And I have worked with land use and planning activities. I come from New Jersey, which I have now come to realize ever so vividly. It is very different. But I am open to learning and being correct in, in making Connecticut decisions in relationship to land use. So at least the attorney, what he was saying, it sounded like, that sounded like what I used to do or dealt with. But I just was, I was referred to you and then I was referred to you and then I ended up being taken in by the Democrats and said, they said, let's run. I am over at Wright's Way at the Mansfield Housing, that's where I'm living. And I really look forward to learning much more about the land itself here throughout the whole town because it is very diverse. And there's, I've, I've been browsing all of the information that you can find in the different documents. And it's much better when you're out there actually looking and seeing what's going on and what's being produced or, or what is being planned for the properties.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Next, if I could entertain our member who is online. Hollis, would you like to take and give us an introduction as to who you are and how you get involved here?
Well, actually, this is my second time around. That, the, the board was reconstituted, I think, last year. I served a little bit last year, but I've been a resident here in Mansfield. You know, I, I currently also serve as the president of the villages at Freedom Green. And, you know, I'm, I'm very happy to have an opportunity to serve. Most of my political experience comes from the state of Massachusetts in which I worked for two governors and a presidential candidate. And so I'm here sort of semi-retired from the full combat of politics. And I, and I moved into a much more warlike situation of ministry. But my experience involving land use and and my co-authoring of the Americans with Disabilities Act gives me a unique experience and perspective concerning accessibility and use of land. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks, Hollis. And maybe I can go to the other side of the aisle here.
Hi, I'm Tina Huey and I have been living in Mansfield for 20 years this June. And we raised our son here, went through the Mansfield schools. And I just became interested in public service from attending the town academy, which was fabulous. Learned a lot. And I'm really new to the topics that are being, you know, decided on here, land use and things like that. But it's extremely important. I'm very interested in it and, and to contributing in some way.
Thank you. Yeah, you're probably the senior member here.
Hey, I'm Robert Sterns. I don't know. I've been on this board 10 years now, I guess, because I'm not sure why I can't get off it. I'm not sure how I got on it. It all, all spiraled out of control. So that's how I'm here.
Hello, everyone. I'm Darwin Gerardo. I've been here in Mansfield since 2016. I live in the neighborhood near Four Corners and Thomas Drive, Great Thomas Drive specifically. And I became a US citizen in 2017. So I'm now able to vote and be part of the community. So one of my goals is to be involved in the community and learn more about the different, you know, things here in Mansfield, how things work here in the US and Mansfield specifically. I'm really glad to be part of this community and I'm here to learn from everyone, you know, view. And thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
And that kind of leaves me. I'm Don Vino. I started off as an architect for 27 years. And then I got myself appointed as a building official at the state. And I did that for about seven years until I was disappointed by another governor. And went from there to local administration and became the building official in East Hartford. And the job also included being the zoning enforcement official. So I learned from the ground up and had an opportunity to get a fair amount of training and education in the CASIO program that trains staff primarily in municipalities. And after that sequence, I became a an energy guru for a nonprofit in Lexington, Massachusetts and went around the various states and to national conventions promoting and teaching energy conservation. And after that kind of, kind of relaxed, I became a energy conservation consultant and also a trainer for the state of Connecticut on energy and building codes and accessibility. And I have almost completely retired. This is about the, the last, the last hurrah at this point. But it's been, it's been a long, very productive road. And I've enjoyed every minute of it and want to be able to take and make as much contributions as I can out of my experience to the zoning board of appeals.
I, I understand if that we, if we turn off the mics and only keep them on when we're speaking, there may be less of an echo. So we might want to just try that.
Let's see now. We received.
So.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. The staff. Do please, by seniority, please.
I'm Jennifer Kaufman and I'm the director of planning and development. I've worked for the town for actually 23 years in a lot of different capacities. I worked with Tina's son on his Eagle Scout project when I was doing, was the environmental planner and did wetlands and did all the parks and natural resources stuff. And then recently, as of September 22, I became the director of, of planning and development. I had been working with Linda Painter very closely as senior planner and the wetlands. So, yeah, so this is my, I'm going on a year and a half as director. Thanks.
So I am Jaleen Woodmansey. I, I'm a planner in Jennifer's office and I also act as the zoning agent. So I'm, I'm out issuing permits and violations. And then I, among other things, I also staff your committee. So I would be your direct contact for questions, information, anything that you need, please feel free to call me. I've been with the town, I think, 16 years in various roles. And, you know, I'm a Mansfield resident. I lived here for 17 years. I've raised three sons here. The oldest is 21 and then I have a junior at E.O. Smith as well, so. Thank you. It's been a while since the ZBA has seen so many faces at the table. So as staff, we'd, we'd want to thank you for your service. It's very much appreciated.
Let's see now. Moving on, we've received copies of the zoning board of appeals bylaws as a draft from last week. And has anybody had an opportunity to be able to look at what that was yet? No? Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, if it pleases, I, I would be happy to kind of run through it very quickly. In the interest of time, I, I won't go into detail about all of the sections, but I just wanted to point out where there is some information that, you know, you can reference back to if you have questions. Would that be okay if I?
Certainly.
Okay.
And I have my questions somewhat prepared.
Okay. All right. Well, stop me if I get to something that's on your list. All right. So the bylaws start with the purpose and authorization. It goes through the fact that the Planning and Zoning Office, the Department of Planning and Development will, is where we house your files. So if you want to look at a record or anything like that, you would come to our office. In addition, all your agendas and minutes are filed with the town clerk, which is a statutory requirement. So you also could visit there if you wanted to see something as well as online, right? You're getting everything from us online and those records on the website are there. So you can look back over minutes from, from years past. If, if you kind of want to see some of the action that the board has taken in the past. Article two talks about membership. There are five regular members of the ZBA as well as three alternates. And typically, as we did today, the alternates are seated for absent members. And the way it's handled typically mostly is alphabetically. So Tina, you would be seated today. Darwin, if you're here, next time it would be your turn. And then we'd fit Nick in when he was present as well. Yes? Yes, absolutely. No, you should, you should sit, you should listen. I also believe you can ask questions during a public hearing. But once the public hearing is closed, as an alternate who's not seated, then you, you don't offer any opinions at that point. But we're not having a public hearing tonight. This is more just informational. So we, we go over that the first time that you have a public hearing. We would go over those rules with you. Okay?
Thank you.
See, 2.4 goes over disqualification. You guys can look at that. The code of ethics, I believe you had to sign with the town clerk. Yeah, so. 2.6 goes over resignation officers. So the current officers, as I recall, are Don Vigno is the chair, Hollis Cotton is the vice chair and Robert Sterns acts as the secretary. Yep. So the, the roles are there if you need to look at that. We'll have a biannual organizational meeting after the elections. We're going to look into whether or not we need to do that at our next meeting. Staff, staff will check that out. All your meetings are recorded. If, if there's a public hearing, so if you have a variance application or a special exception application and we're having a public hearing where the public is invited to come and speak on the application, those meetings are live streamed on our YouTube channel as well. And those meetings, you can go back and, and look at and they're just up there. So, and that's why it's so important to talk into the microphone so that it's picking it up for the recording. Let's see. I mean, there, there's the whole public hearing sort of order here. We'll, I mean, Don will run that public hearing. He's very used to doing that when we, when we get to that point, when we have an application. Public comment, I touched on that a little bit. Typically, the order for applications is the applicant would come to the chair during the public hearing and they would present to you their application. At the close, you would be, when they're, you know, completed, presenting their case to you. You could ask some questions. Then the chair is going to ask the public to come up one by one to give their opinions on the applications. He'll ask for proponents first, then anybody in opposition to the application. And then the floor would be open to people that hadn't really made up their mind, might need, have some questions that need to be answered. And then at the close of that, the applicant then has a chance to come back up to the table and address any concerns that the public. One, one thing that's really important, I think Kevin touched on this a little bit, is to remember that once the public hearing is closed, okay? And, and the applicant has had a chance to present their case, the public has had a chance and the chair closes the public hearing, which is a statement that he'll make and then the time. No new information can be presented, okay? So the applicant doesn't get another chance to say, oh, you know, wait, I, I, I just have this one photo I need to show you. It's really important that once the public hearing is closed, that no new information gets presented.
By, by both the applicant and the public.
Yep, so. So staff, we're here to assist. As, as board members, you do have the right to hire a consultant should you wish. I don't think we've done that, you know, yeah. But that is, that is something that is available to you. If you have questions that you think a consultant would be best to provide you the information, the cost of that per the ordinance is borne by the applicant. So that's at no cost to the town, should you decide that that's something you want to do.
I think it's pretty rare in ZBA applications. I, I'm not aware of ever that happening in my tenure here. But again, you know, reliance on the town attorney is, is really important. When we're crafting a motion, especially for the larger projects, for example, that maybe you are aware of, like in Four Corners, we always consult with our town attorney. We need to make sure that we don't open up the town to litigation or appeal because it just takes a lot of time and, and it is, it does cost money. So any questions you have, feel free to come, come to us and ask. And if we don't know the answer, we will search it out for you.
So that's a real quick review of your bylaws. Questions?
I had one or two of them. The, the main question that I, I wrote down was whether or not in the, the bylaws of the, of the draft, there's nothing that indicates whether or not the alternates have any voting in the matter of election of, of officials or other regular business that might come before the board.
So I do recall, we did, I think it was the town clerk I checked with when we were voting for officers the last time. And Hollis, I believe, was a alternate member at that time. But you're, you're right. I don't think that that addresses this except 2.3. So the officers, yes, I don't think the bylaws address that. But section 2.3.3 says such alternate members shall, when seated as herein provided, have all the powers and duties of regular members as set forth in the general statutes. So they do have, if they are seated, they have the same voting rights as a regular member.
Well, that, that's, that's in the matter of the applications and, and hearings.
Correct.
I'm talking about the other business that the, that the, that the board conducts in terms of voting of officers. You know, the voting on the bylaws.
If they're seated, they vote. So for example, tonight, Ms. Huey will be able to vote on accepting of the bylaws. So even though they're alternates, because they're, they are basically like regular members. They just, they step in if, if you don't have a quorum, like, so that's basically how that works.
Okay, but in other words, the, the five, the five sitting members of the board
Yep.
would not have, the alternates would not have any voice or say in the election of officers.
If, if all five members were present, I believe that to be correct.
Right. But for example, tonight, only four members are present. So you've got your two alternates and one is seated. So voting on the minutes or the bylaws or it probably is not recommended that one of the alternates serve as one of your officers when you're doing elections, but they could vote.
Okay. Well, that takes care of that one. Let's see now. Yeah, I had some, I had some other ones that I think I'd like to go over with staff. But I don't know that you've got everything else. The, under 4.6, one of the questions that I had was if we have a meeting and there is business outside of a hearing, is there any opportunity for comments from the public who is seated? That's not clear. That's not clear in the draft.
So your question is, even if we're not in a public hearing, could the public, would we have an open public comment section, like, much like the council does?
Yes.
Sorry, that was on silent. I, so the way with a regulatory body, what we try to encourage the public to do is to submit their comments in writing. Because the, like, right tonight, obviously, you don't have a public hearing, but perhaps, you know, it would really depend on what they're coming to speak out, speak on. They'll say, well, you know, my neighbor is doing some sort of work and they're going to come into a variance or a variance for you, but that could, you'd have to be really careful about predetermining your decision on that. So that's why you, you know, you'd have to be really careful to say, you know, look, that will, the questions can be handled by staff and we encourage you that if and when your neighbor does come and apply for a variance or a special exception, you come and speak at that time because we will have to only consider information that's been entered into the public hearing. So the answer is yes, you could decide to have public comment. It's just, it's, you have to be really careful because you are, you know, you're, you don't want it to predetermine any application.
Of course not.
Yeah, so like, for example, the Planning and Zoning Commission generally does not have public comment because they are looking at so many applications. However, when they're doing their plan of conservation and development, that is when they would have a lot of public forum. They have a work session. They just had a work session that I believe you attend, were you in?
No, I wasn't in attendance.
Okay, so anyways, they had a work session that was sort of like a free flowing dialogue. And then certainly you came to the master planning workshop that was open. And so I think it just has to be very carefully handled with something like the Planning and Zoning Commission. It would have to be public comment around a certain, like, what, you know, if there's no application happening in the Four Corners, what type of growth would you like to see or not see, say, at the Four Corners? Right now, we don't have any applications happening. We're in a moratorium. So now it's like, it's okay to talk about those things. So we can get more clarity, but I do think you could have public comment, but you just kind of have to put a lot of guardrails on it.
Oh, yeah.
Do you have anything you think that's?
We always encourage people to submit to the Planning and Zoning Commission anyways, submit their comments in writing. And I will say that I know you will be the same, but our Planning and Zoning Commission is very good about reading the material, so you certainly can read it. And then as someone can request that, say, you put something on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you for the clarity of your response.
I'm sorry, am I interrupting you, Hollis?
Not at all, not at all.
Okay, I just, I just have a question, just listening to all of it. It still sounds as if you're at the edge of ex parte experience and that what you just described made me feel more comfortable in relationship to that you can entertain written comments and that the staff can look at them, they can be shared, your comments can be shared with us. And if it becomes an important, something that, after discussion here at a meeting between the members, that we could enter into opening up some type of discussion to the public. I just, I understand, especially with zoning, that and once you start venturing into open discussion, it can become very hard to manage, especially when the public has an agenda.
So I think how that scenario would work is, you know, any, any written letter, any email that the staff receives directed to your board would go in as a communication in your packet. If, if, if upon review of that communication, a board member felt that it required more discussion, it would be placed, you would request that it be placed on a future agenda for future discussion. So I think that's typically how staff and the board would handle it. But, you know, if public comments something that you know, the members want to have on their agenda, we would probably run that by the town attorney before voting on the bylaws to see if that would be legal.
Or advisable. Hollis, do you have any comments at this point in time?
I appreciate the summary that was given and I'm enlightened by the discussion, but I don't have any personal inquiries at this point.
Thank you.
Tina, Tina.
Oh. Jill.
Yeah, I had a question. I did see here in 4.4 that we follow Robert's Rules of Order and ask for some forbearance because I do not have a complete grasp of Robert's Rules of Order and I'm generally familiar with them, but hope that any violations will be handled generously.
No worries.
And, Don, if you don't mind.
Yes.
I very regret to inform you, I got to take off. I have a conflict now, so I'm sorry about that, everybody.
Not to take up too much time, but in concerns with Robert's Rules of Order, I would be glad to have a conversation with any member as I have been the vice-parliamentarian of the National Democratic Party at one time in my life. So anybody who wants to give me a call, that's fine.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's great, Hollis. The, and I believe when we were speaking of Robert's Rules of Order, those are the revised rules?
Most certainly. Absolutely. The revised rules, which will be summarized accordingly for this meeting venue as opposed to a national or international venue.
Thanks.
So may I suggest that we table the voting on the bylaws until we, staff can get some clarification on those questions for you, Mr. Chair?
Certainly, I think that it would, having received a revised copy on the 18th, it is very opportune that we have at least a couple of weeks to be able to chew them through and come back to our next meeting to be able to take and have further discussion, not necessarily leading to a complete acceptance.
Okay. So we have a little bit of a time constraint here. Our Zoom account is going to be used in five minutes for another meeting? Not sure how that happened, but, okay. So I just, so as, and they're a total Zoom meeting, so. Okay, so just very quickly, if I may, Mr. Chair, I did include in your packet some information about required trainings. This is a fairly new requirement for land use officials. Call me to talk about it if you have any questions. You have a couple of years to get it done. It's not a heavy lift. A lot of the trainings are online. Board member Sterns and board member, and your chair Vigno recently attended one of them, so they could give you some information if you had any questions.
Yeah, I've noted that there's, there's not an awful lot that's up on the state website as far as where those things might be. So we're going to have to take and I think talk to the people at the state to give us a little bit better calendar.
Yep, and staff will continue to forward any training opportunities that come through us to our emails. Staff will forward those to you. And if you're interested, please just contact us and we'll, we'll get you, we'll get you registered. If there's a fee, we do have a budget for that. So that would, that would be on us.
And I know this is something like a Robert's Rule issue, but since we had the secretary, right? We, shouldn't we designate Darwin as a sitting member at this time? So that it is recognized that?
Yep, we still have, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
And then the other thing staff just really wanted to note quickly is I did include your meeting schedule. We will cancel meetings should there not be any business. The chair and I will speak about a week, a week and a half before the scheduled meeting to talk about any business that may need to be on your agenda or whether we would cancel it. But, you know, you'd be notified online of any cancellation.
Yeah, and I would, I would think that the Fourth Tuesday in December is probably not going to work for most people.
Can't we schedule apart?
Who's bringing the wine?
With that, we have two minutes left.
We have two minutes left. Would anybody care to make a motion for adjournment?
I'd like to move for adjournment this evening.
And hearing out a second?
I can second.
And all of those in favor of adjournment at two minutes of seven? Please, so, aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, Hollis.